Long it's been since we all met.
Oh, come on, it was summertime.
That's actually one of the problems. I don't know if it's getting older, it's COVID, but yes, you lose. Because of the COVID, I think we're losing our sense of time. It doesn't seem that long ago to me. Can you picture what did we do?
So Cynthia, do you know who else is supposed to join us tonight?
This is Stephanie.
We are, we've got a full quorum tonight is what for folks who got back to me. So we have the majority of people here. The only ones I didn't see yet were Karen Blakemore and Billy Giblin. Those were the only ones I didn't see, but um, looks like we got everybody between the phone and the video.
Okay.
So we're close, we're super close. But we certainly have quorum. And if you if you wanted to start the meeting, you are certainly entitled to do so because we have quorum at this point, but it's on you, Chair.
Let's just, we'll just give them another thirty seconds or so and we'll get started.
Okey doke. Hi Stephanie, Happy New Year.
Hey there, how's it going? Sorry that mute button can take a little while.
Hey Stephanie. All right, well, why don't we get started Cynthia, if you'd be so kind as to call the roll?
Sure. Are you all set Miranda?
Yeah, you're good to go.
Okay. Planning Commission meeting is called to order on Wednesday, January twenty-six, twenty-twenty-two at seven oh three P M. And we will do the roll call and maybe people, there's Billy. So we are one step closer and then we were just waiting on Karen Blakemore and I know that she had said she was coming, so I anticipate her dropping in here real soon. So we will start with the roll. Chair Williams?
Here.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes, here.
Vice Chair Reese?
He was here.
Vice Chair Reese?
It doesn't look like he has audio access right now.
Okay, we'll come back to him. Commissioner Paray?
There he is.
Commissioner Paray is present.
Excellent. Commissioner Herring?
Here. I'm here Cynthia, did you hear me? Can you hear me okay? Okay, great.
Perfect. Commissioner Glasser?
Here.
Commissioner Giblin?
Here.
Here.
Commissioner Cornell?
Here.
Do we have Commissioner Blakemore yet? Excellent. And let me circle back to Vice Chair Reese.
Yes, I have been a little trouble getting connected today.
Excellent. Excellent. Everybody is here. Fantastic.
Excellent. Thank you Cynthia. So we'll move on to the approval of the minutes from the October twenty-seventh meeting. Hopefully everyone's had a chance to review the minutes. It seems like it was so long ago. Does anyone have any comments or corrections, suggested corrections to the minutes?
I got a couple from Karen and Chair Williams, which I tucked into the minutes that you see in this packet, so.
Okay. Thank you. Hearing no further comments on it, could we have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
So moved.
Sounded like Roger.
I think that was, I think that was Roger that moved and do we have a second?
And then a Chris second? Awesome. Okay, we will alphabetically down.
Oh, I think Billy has to abstain. I think everyone was.
He was abstaining?
Yes, I need to abstain. I was not there.
He was away.
I was working in Arizona.
Anyone else abstaining because they didn't attend? The October twenty-seventh meeting?
I think Billy was the only one.
Okay, we will go down the list. Commissioner Blakemore? Commissioner Cornell? Commissioner Glasser?
Yes.
Commissioner Herring?
Yes. I said yes Cynthia, did you hear me?
I didn't hear that, but I just heard you.
Okay.
Commissioner Paray?
Yes.
Did I miss it? Commissioner Paray?
Yes.
Okay.
You hear that?
Sorry, it gets a little wonky sometimes with the wind and more. Vice Chair Reese?
The wind and weathering. Yes. Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
And Chair Williams?
Ah, yes.
Excellent. Motion passes.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much. Do we have anyone here from the public? Let me look down through the list and see, I don't, other than, let's see, Rick is on. Does anyone from the public wish to speak on any topic that is not part of the agenda this evening?
This is Rick, I do have a couple of things.
Please go ahead, Rick.
Okay, as you probably all know, we've had a bunch of things happen at the fire department here recently. We do have a new chief in place, Mike Scott. He did attend to one of the B O T meetings a couple of weeks ago. I'll see if I can talk him into coming to one of these here before too long. He's in the serious steep learning curve phase right now, trying to figure out what it is we do and how we do it, more importantly, how we do it here. And whether that's going to work for him long term, I think it will. It seems like a really good guy. The other thing is, you know, the first of the year, all of the new codes went into effect. And I want to thank everybody who helped out with that process. I think the the Marshall Fire recently that a bunch of us went down and helped out on really showed that some of those things that we got through in the codes with the fire resistant exteriors on both commercial and residential as well as mitigation really do, they really are important. So hopefully we can keep going with that trend. We're starting to work more with Miranda and some other folks and Pro Sab on some mitigation projects to work that side and I think that's our next big big battle to work on. So that's all, thanks.
Thank you, Rick. Where does, refresh my memory, where is he coming from?
Most recently, he's been the statewide training chief for the Colorado Department of Fire Prevention and Control. Prior to that, he was the EMS chief or medical chief over at the Colorado River Fire Department, which is the rifle area. And then before that, he was in Crested Butte as their EMS chief there as well. So he's got some experience with both small departments and large departments, but this will be his first role as the as the top dog, as it were.
Nice. Great, great, thank you.
Yep.
I'm very hopeful for him.
We are too, we think he'll do well.
Yeah.
Okay, let's move on to the informational items. The town staff report is next and I assume that Miranda, you will present the staff report.
I will, and so we're determining a new thing that I have Chris in my ear and it echoes, so I'm going to take my headphone out, so you won't be able to, I won't be able to hear you, but I'll present and then put it back in for questions.
Okay, thank you.
So um, the staff report, we, first things first, Chris Pelletier, we had to say farewell to him. Chris's last day was January thirteenth, and so he's officially back east. I believe he starts his new job. I was actually in the Public Works Utilities Department for a municipality in New Hampshire. He starts that at the end of this month. So in his, so Cynthia actually wrote an amazing nomination letter for him for this award, and we're not sure if he's won it yet, but it's a John Christians Memorial Reward and Award, and I won't go over this in its entirety, but I hope you had a chance to read it. I think Cynthia beautifully captured all the things that Chris did for us. You know, and then there's more to add, but I think Cynthia did a remarkable job, bold job here, putting into writing everything that Chris has done and then so. Sorry, I have a little laryngitis, so bear with me too as I whisper, yell at you. COVID, we saw a huge spike, a huge spike over the last couple of weeks. Really, the past three weeks since this data came out, we are seeing a downward trend, which is great. Even in Netherlands itself, we did have one round of testing where I believe all but six were positive, and that was over a hundred plus people. And so we're seeing that trend down, which is wonderful. Of this last round of testing from Monday, it's, I recall that the numbers were like less than ten, were testing positive. So we kind of had a huge surge over the last three weeks, but hopefully we see that trend down. Just a couple of reminders, we do have vaccine clinics that are still happening on Thursdays. COVID testing has moved to Mondays. It is recommended for both the vaccine clinic and COVID testing that you register in advance. That does help them to kind of spread the people out to make sure that we see everyone. We have P P E at Town Hall for businesses. We still have masks and hand sanitizer. We actually also ordered COVID tests, but unfortunately no longer have any. Those were purchased through N D D A Economic Vitality Grant Funds. We moved through those pretty quick. They were the rapid tests and businesses needed them and used them within a weekend and came back for more. We are working on the Big Springs Egress. Jonah Goose is, does have those funds earmarked for Big Springs Egress, but it's unknown if that will make it through. So if not, our team is currently kind of full steam ahead, looking at as many grant opportunities that are out there to try and get that egress constructed. We have landed on a route and J V A is ready to do engineer drawing once we have the funding secured. And we'll meet again next month. Those are publicly noticed meetings, so you are more than welcome to come attend it if you'd like. We'll notice it on our website. I know a few of you were there last night, but we had a collaborative meeting with Boulder County on the Crossing Caribou Mine.
Hey Miranda.
Served as an opportunity to ask the, is someone trying to ask me a question?
Yes.
Sorry Billy, I don't have my headphones in.
Oh, yeah, I heard you say that, I'm sorry. Let's see. Is that Big Springs thing with the goose, is that through the Build Back Better act that is stuck in Congress?
It's actually, he selected it as a special funding request that he wanted to push through on his own. It's not a part of the Build Back Better, but we are looking at the possibility of even infrastructure funds to help us if he can't push it through as one of his special projects. He picked five projects in his jurisdiction that he could push forward and Big Springs Egress ended up being one of them. So now, you know, even if the goose gave us funding, it's only five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars that he was going to set aside and the project itself is looking at more like eight hundred thousand, so we're going to have to secure separate funding anyways. So that's what we're looking at.
Miranda, is there some way to invite the Big Springs neighborhood to review that, the route and anything else? At least the folks that would be using that.
Is there like a group listserv or something Karen that I could send it through?
Well, you could look at next door.
Okay.
To start.
Cool. Yeah, happy to.
Yeah, it would be good to get their input, you know, the folks that would be using it.
Yes, I will send that out. And I can send it to the Planning Commission as well, so you can distribute it to whoever you want to. Okay, so so last night, that collaborative meeting again was with Boulder County Community Planning and Permitting and Public Health. It was really focused just solely on like asking questions of where they are with permitting status, how they're looking at the environmental concerns, and what they're doing to address traffic and roadway concerns. It definitely was more kind of a question and answer and not all the questions could be answered. They were not in the purview of the team who is there, but I do have a meeting set with the presenters on Monday to talk about building a website that will be very specific to the mine and what's going on with the mine and providing updates as quick as possible. And then the mine did speak for a few minutes and had talked about that they plan to host their own kind of Q and A session at the Caribou Room sometime in the future, but I just don't know kind of date and time.
Basically no comment, but yeah, we'll talk later.
Right.
Yep.
Um, hybrid meeting, we have contracted with Jamie Seifer, who helped Leadville put together their hybrid meeting system. He has ordered everything we feel like we need and then some using remaining CARES funding and some ARPA funds so we can host hybrid. So maybe for those of you who want to be in person, we might be able to do that as early as the February Planning Commission meeting. Personnel, oh, go ahead. Trying to look half.
Yeah.
Oh, good. Um, for personnel updates, we actually believe that we'll be able to do the interviews for Town Marshal next week. We're looking at doing the Board of Trustees group interview, potentially on Wednesday, and then maybe a public meeting greet on Friday. The two final candidates are Jennifer Fine Lovin and Patrick Fitzgibbon, and some more information will come out about them in the next day or two. When it comes to public works, we actually opted not to replace Chris Pelletier, but instead break the department up into three separate departments with that now all report to the town administrator. So for utilities, we have Jen Landon, who is now the utilities manager. Emmett Pelletier was promoted to street supervisor with the goal of moving him into streets manager by the end of the year. And as of Friday, Mickey Dunn was promoted to parks manager. She was picked as the top candidate out of twenty-one. And what's a cool thing about the parks is we're actually looking at possibly bringing on another parks manager candidate to maybe fill her her position. We'll of course publicly post that parks lead, but may have a candidate who was a part of this twenty-one who applies, which could be great because there's really qualified, some qualified candidates in that applicant pool of twenty-one. Sustainability coordinator, we received ninety applications, a lot to go through. They have narrowed it down to the top three and we're going to provide a recommendation to Sab tomorrow on who they think should be appointed. So would recommend you join that meeting if you're curious. Gary McDaniel, who was the former coordinator, did resign in December. We're looking to bring someone on hopefully the end of this month. I included kind of a treasures update in here. Rita is always busy at the end of the year, doing the twenty-twenty-one financial audit for finalizing the twenty-twenty-two budget book. The twenty-twenty-one audit from a third party is scheduled for April and just generally kind of wrapping up all things finance. Always want to include a public works update. They're busy as always. I think, excuse me, one of the biggest plans for utilities is that they received ARPA funds to do grit removal. And so we'll see them install a grit removal system in the next couple of months, actually, and that will help with the efficiency of our wastewater treatment. The team's also really focused on, you know, their equipment, ensuring their equipment is is in good working condition as the snow comes. And then the parks team is actively working on getting a plan together to finish the Barker Meadow Park grant from G O C O. And then the last thing to stand on is obviously a very sad note that Sharon Ferguson, who was our visitor center manager, passed away unexpectedly due to an urgent medical condition, medical situation. It did occur at the visitor center and unfortunately was transported to the hospital where that evening she passed away. So she's definitely truly missed by all of us. It was a hard decision to open the visitor center again, but Teresa Crush Warren is helping to keep that going since that, of course, is what Sharon would have wanted. Thank you for those of you who donated, a lot of people donated to Sharon and her family, and I know they really appreciated that. They plan to do a memorial service probably in the spring, and when we have more information, we'll share that with with kind of her friends and family. We're also looking to do a plaque that we'll put on the visitor center. The visitor center was really her pride and joy and she was a manager for about four years. And we want to be able to honor her through that plaque. And I believe that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Miranda. Does anyone have any questions?
Well, I just wanted to mention this. So I was the new guy at two radio stations. And I will just note that the standard joke to play on the new guy at a radio station is they go into the studio, not the main studio, but the recording studio, and they switch the main guy's headphones to a one second delay while he's doing the news. They did that the first time and I thought that was a little funny. Takes a lot of concentration to get through the news with a one second delay. The second guys did the same thing and I thought, how stupid of me not to realize they were going to do that, but well, there you go. Yeah, it's really hard with a delay.
Yeah, no, it's like echoes in my ear, but if I talk through my phone, you can't hear me. So it's just a struggle.
Yeah.
Well, good job. Okay, any other questions for Miranda? I have one. So Miranda, you indicated that the testing and the vaccinations for the end of January is that, do you have a plan for February?
It's actually planning to continue until further notice.
Okay, same schedule?
Same schedule.
Okay, I'll pass the word around.
Sometimes they have to cancel day of because of personnel, so I would check the town website. We try to push that out or on Facebook. Or you could always just call us.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much. All right, we'll move on to our action items. The first one is our annual fest of appointment of planning commission officers. So Miranda, would you go ahead and introduce this item, please?
I think I was going to let Cynthia do it because I have that duplicate problem if Cynthia doesn't mind.
Okay.
Yes, I do not mind. Give me one second here to get my shelf together. So the Planning Commission annually appoints its officers and we have had Chair Williams for, what is a couple of years now?
No, actually just one, just one year.
Just one year? Wow, okay.
Yeah, I know it seems like two, doesn't it?
It seemed, well, these last couple of years have seen, seemed like a decade, so. So we do have a full quorum tonight, so if there is interest serving as the chair or vice chair, it is good to consider the time constraints. Maybe the chair and current vice chair and chair can speak to that in case anyone is interested in serving in those roles. So there is a lot of paying attention to the packet and facilitating the meeting and you know, both of them have attended the Planner One-O-One Training down in Golden to have a an understanding of liability for appointed and elected officers and things like that, but maybe do you want to speak time commitment of what that looks like for you, Steve, and also Jim?
Sure, I'll go first. So like what you said is is true, we typically work with town staff to put together the agenda for the next meeting. We actually look out a little further too, to see what's coming up and try to balance things, try to come up with an agenda that's not too onerous or long, you know, try to fit it in. We used to have face-to-face meetings, we've been doing them virtually, but that will that will probably go back to face-to-face shortly. And like, like you said, Cynthia, we keep up to date with training and stuff like that, which actually we recommend the entire planning commission do that as well. So from a time commitment perspective, it varies, of course, depending on what the agenda's like and any research into it, but but but, you know, typically it's maybe sometimes up to a couple of hours a week. Jim, do you want to add anything to that?
I would concur that, you know, we've been pretty light over the last few months. Obviously, we haven't had some meetings. So that's been unusual, but I would say at a minimum, it's an additional two hours a month commitment for a pre-planning commission meeting that we have scheduled and get together with Miranda and kind of talk through the upcoming packet. And then it could be more based on additional items coming up or if we have a complicated thing. I think during the paid parking you know, items, those required more time, but typically I would say on average, it's about an additional two hours a month.
Or more depending on the, I don't know, Roger, if you want to add in since you were chair for many years on your time commitment?
I think that's accurate. I also feel though that the chair, I mean, when I was chair, I pretty much spent Wednesday morning, pretty much all that day kind of planning for the meeting. I know when I, the way I ran the meetings, you wouldn't believe I spent six hours preparing, but I think the chair on that one meeting day, you actually do spend several hours preparing. That's to me was the bigger part, the meetings with staff actually getting it going and organized. That was actually kind of, that was fun. That was, that was good to be with people. It's actually for the chair or the vice chair, whoever's going to chair that meeting needs to spend several hours being prepared.
At least. Okay. Thank you. So Cynthia, how do you want to proceed here? Last year, I think we asked for nominations first. And then after any further discussion, I think we did a kind of a secret ballot where we would either email or text Miranda with vote. And then we took a short break and then she was able to tally them. Do you want to proceed in a similar way?
Yeah, that sounds great. We can get into bylaws while everyone, Miranda, is that something you can accommodate this year?
Yeah, that works for me.
Awesome. Does anyone have the ability to contact Miranda? Go ahead Karen.
I'm running for trustee, so I'm not.
I'm running for trustee, so I'm not interested in the chair or vice chair for planning commission.
Thank you for that. That's helpful.
Okay, do we, we have any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Steve Williams for chair and James Reese for vice chair.
I would like to second that.
Okay, thank you. I will, I will agree to do another year if so elected.
I will also agree to serve as vice chair for another year if the planning commission feels that I am up to that task.
Thank you, guys.
Any, any other comments or nominations?
There are no other nominees. For vice chair and Steve for chair.
Okay, thank you.
Chris?
Chris, Chris Paray.
Awesome.
How do we have a mix?
I, I'm sorry, I didn't hear who Chris nominated.
Stephanie.
Stephanie.
And Steve for chair.
Okay, Stephanie Herring for vice chair and Steve Williams for chair.
This is, this is Stephanie. I don't know if you can hear me.
I think, I think I got it.
Well, I, well, I greatly appreciate the nomination. I think in terms of the time commitment, I may have to wait until my kids are just a tad bit older. I really enjoy serving on the, on the planning commission, but it is, you know, especially, it is, I know that what everybody does to to serve as the chair and the vice chair is a big commitment. And it's a little, it might probably be a challenge for for me and my, my current situation, so. But I do appreciate it, Chris. Thank you very much. I don't know how Linda feels, I don't want to speak for her. Ask me again in a couple of years.
There we go.
Okay, any, anyone else?
If there's just two nominations, one for the chair and vice chair, do we actually need to do an election like this? Can we just make a motion and vote?
Yeah, I think that would be fine.
Yeah, I think so.
Probably easier.
Yes.
Okay, if there are no other comments or nominations.
Real quick, Steve, did Linda say no to? I didn't hear. I thought, I thought that we nominated, that Chris nominated her. I couldn't understand that.
This is Linda, and I, I did not hear that I was nominated. At this, at this time, I have to say no to that because of a time commitment.
Okay. Thank you.
But thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? If not, could we have a motion? Do we, I think we should do this as two separate motions, Cynthia?
I'm good with that.
Okay, so could we have a, we'll do a motion for chair first?
I'd like to move to nominate Steve Williams as chair. This is right.
Do we have a second?
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Chris Paray has been trying to second. You just might be out, not be able to hear him. I can hear him in my ear.
I heard, I heard him second before I did.
Chris Paray second, okay. I'm gonna run down the vote for chair for Steve Williams. So we're gonna go down the list. We'll go alphabetically. Commissioner Blakemore?
Yes.
Commissioner Cornell?
Yes.
Commissioner Giblin?
Yes, definitely.
Glasser?
Yes.
Commissioner Herring?
Yes.
Commissioner Paray?
Yes.
Vice Chair Reese?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Wait a minute, he doesn't vote. I don't think that Julian.
I think he can because it's only at this board, right? Or is this, I think, I think this is a, just the planning commission and the board doesn't have to approve this, correct? Pretty sure.
That's correct.
Yeah, that's in your bylaws.
The board isn't involved, so I do vote.
And you vote in the affirmative?
In the affirmative.
Okay, and then Chair Williams, did you want to vote for yourself as the chair?
I guess I should abstain, but since I did volunteer to do another year, I'll say yes.
Okay, you're gonna stay in the hot seat.
Yeah. Okay, so for vice chair, do we have a, someone make a motion for a vice chair?
I would, Roger, I would certainly like to make a motion to nominate Jim Reese as vice chair. He's really stepped forward and done an excellent job this year. Thanks, Jim.
I'll second that nomination.
Great, that was Karen. Was that Linda or Karen?
Karen.
Okay, I think I know people's voices. All right, we're gonna go backwards down the alphabet, so we will start with Williams.
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Vice Chair Reese, do you want to vote for yourself as vice chair?
I will abstain.
Okay. Commissioner Paray?
Abstain? No, yes.
Okay.
I just wanted to abstain more. That'd be fun.
Commissioner Herring?
Yes.
Commissioner Glasser?
Yes.
Commissioner Giblin?
Yes.
Commissioner Cornell?
Yes.
And Commissioner Blakemore?
Yes.
Fantastic, staying in the hot seat.
Okay, well, I guess you're stuck with us for another year. You only have yourselves to blame. Thank you very much.
I only have six months. Five months.
Well, there you go. Okay, so moving on to the next action item, the planning commission bylaws. As you know, we've talked about these for several meetings. And Miranda or Cynthia, would you introduce this action item, please?
We actually have Attorney Madsen here, and I was gonna let her talk about it because she did the final edits.
Okay.
Good evening, members of the planning commission. So before you tonight are revised bylaws. As you mentioned, Chair Williams, these bylaws have been before the planning commission on two separate occasions, I believe in August and October of 2021. I was not at the October meeting, but I think there was pretty significant discussion. And I took the revisions made by Miranda, and I reviewed those against the minutes. And I think I captured all of the changes. But you do have those bylaws, revised bylaws in your packets. You have a clean version and then a redline version. And I'm here and available to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Jennifer. What's that? Yeah. I looked through and I compared the two, and I did what you did, Jennifer. I looked back through the, through the minutes. And I don't, I couldn't find anything that was missed or incorrect. But we can open it up to the rest of the planning commission to make any comments as well.
This is Karen, and it, it all looks great to me. I think you've captured the things that we discussed at the last two meetings. There is one sentence on page 22 that is awkward. It is under article eight, the last sentence, page three of the document, page 22 of the packet.
So is that it is not the purpose or intent of this provision to postpone or unduly delay a decision by the board because of the absence of a member to enable substantial time to review the record?
It's that to enable substantial time to review the record that I don't understand. Maybe it, maybe the intent is because of the absence of a member which result or, and their inability to have substantial time to review the record.
And I think actually, one thing I noticed here that should be changed is it should be provisioned to postpone or unduly delay a decision by the planning commission. So that's what it should say. It, it should say the planning commission. And what this is, is that if, and we had this come up, where we had a planning commission member that was absent for a meeting on a land use application, that planning commission member then listened to the audio for, for the meeting that was missed and then was able to participate in the vote at a subsequent meeting. So all this is saying is that the, that because somebody is absent and they want to listen to the recording, that should not delay a decision by the planning commission.
Well, maybe it's just missing one word. Because of the absence of a member to enable them substantial time to review the record. I, I, I understand the intent. Maybe it's just me that finds, end of the sentence awkward.
Okay. So maybe when you make a motion, if somebody wants to move to approve these, once we get through all questions, the motion would be to approve as drafted with the revision on page three in article eight, as discussed.
Okay, I'll go around first. Any other comments?
Yes, I have one. Jennifer, it's article three membership. I just want clarification on that last sentence of article three membership so that we're very clear on in the future and for future commissions. Eight members shall be residents of the town appointed by the mayor with the approval of the board of trustees and shall hold no other municipal offices except that one shall be appointed member with, appointed member may be a member of the board of adjustments. What it, what is, need to clarify municipal office?
So municipal office would include board of trustees. That would include the board of trustees.
And that's about it? Yeah, the other one I thought.
Let me see here. I, I just want to see if this is duplicative of what is in the town code. And so I'm looking at that.
Okay, I, I don't, it's, it's not an issue, but the clarity for one, it's like with Billy, which I've always kind of brought this up. I know certainly a advisory committee to be on trails and different ones, certainly I feel is not a municipal office. But being on the BZA, and this has nothing to do with Billy and the appointment, because, you know, the BZA could go to the court. And there's a municipal office in their decisions. So I think it's for the future that there needs to be real clarity on that.
It is, so this is in the, this, a similar sentence is in the Netherlands municipal code on the membership of the planning commission. And I'm not seeing municipal office mentioned in any other that I, I could tell. Let me just see.
Is, is there a definition of municipal office in the code somewhere?
There is not a definition of municipal office.
I think you just need to say it.
Well, we could, yeah, I mean, we can spell it out here.
Well, you can there, but yeah, it's not gonna change the code.
No, 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 I understand. I'm just saying that, that, you know, in the future, definition could be added to the code, but for, for the bylaws, we could, we could explain what that is.
Yes, you, you could do that, but always the code is gonna control over the bylaws.
What is a municipal office?
So is that an elected office? Is that what we're talking about?
Well, I think that we could make I think, I would say it's an elected office that a, an appointed position is not an office position.
It strikes me that elected office is very clear and could easily be the term we use there.
Just, just add elected municipal office?
You could say that.
Or elected office?
Elected municipal office, I think is very clear.
I mean, what is, so while we're doing this without really considering other issues, I mean, what is, what is the concern, Chair Williams? Or, I'm sorry, Commissioner Cornell, what is, what is the concern here?
I have, my concern is that we're quite a while, we had discussion going back, a couple of town administrators. I mean, for years, it would come up when, you know, whether we, we had discussions about a a advisory committee, what was that? What was the other role? Because it was very specific about one member would be, you know, could be on the BZA and and then that, that was all. So that was always it. And then we started appointing to other offices, municipal office, whatever you want to call it. And I just kept over the years of us, and I apologize for not bringing this up, you know, two meetings ago when, you know, I missed it. I just always ask for clarity. What does that mean? Can you be all these things? I just always asked for clarity. What does that mean? Can you be all these things and on, on several boards? That's really what it was. For a while there, the planning commission just should be solely independent. All the planning commission members should just be planning commission members. So that was kind of an informal role. So then we started adding to advisory committees and that. So I just feel this is a good opportunity to make it clear for, you know, the next 10 years, whatever. Next time it might come up and someone asks or challenges it, I said, no, here's clearly in the bylaws that you're allowed to do that. So I think no other elected municipal office would be very clear.
I think that's clear.
Except for the fact that, except for the fact that, I mean, the other thing that could be implicated by municipal office is that certain positions in the administrative side of town. So the town clerk, the town attorney and the town treasurer. I think under municipal code are defined as offices. And in our, in Netherlands code, those individuals are labeled as officers. So and I think that's a conflict of interest issue.
May, may I suggest a clarification to, just to help me understand? It, it strikes me that well, I'm, I'm, I'm going to guess that the intent of this is to kind of assure that someone who's on the planning commission is focused on the planning commission and is not likely to encounter conflicts of interest. Certainly I am here and certainly I'm always conscious of if the vote represents a conflict of interest for me. And we don't want everybody to be worrying about that. I mean, I'm mostly here just to watch what's happening and report back to the BOT. So it strikes me that this should have know what this term should mean. Should mean an elected BOT or an elected member of the BOT. I'm not sure I see how there should be a restriction against the, anybody in the administration or our town attorney. Or even someone who's on ProSAB that would like to also be on the planning commission. That seems like an awful lot of work. Yeah, I mean, it seems like an awful lot of work, but yeah, if, if someone wants to do that and they can do the job well. And of course, that's the decision of the BOT. The BOT is going to take all of that into account when it says, yes, you're appointed to this commission. So that's why I think elected office should be the term. Meaning you don't want anybody on the BOT who's got, in actual fact, the real issue is you don't want anybody who's on the BOT because the BOT is going to be supervising this. To some degree, the BOT is going to be, going to be giving the final vet to a number of the things that the planning commission does. So, so Attorney Madsen, isn't it just the BOT that we're worried about here?
Well, I mean, I think conflicts can come up in other situations. But the, the biggest issue, yes, is the Board of Trustees in terms of quasi judicial matters that you wouldn't have, you don't want to have planning commission members that also serve as elected officials on the Board of Trustees. That's obvious. Yes. Yeah.
It would seem like the, the lawyer would be the one that makes me wonder, you know? I mean, I don't know, maybe all the town employees, administrators, that's one thing, but I don't know why in my head the the lawyer would be the potential for conflict of interest seems like is there. Maybe I'm wrong. It's my thought.
Yeah, the way I'm reading this is that the municipal office is an office that requires you to be a resident. Like the BZA, you have to be a resident. Planning Commission, you have to be a resident. Board of Trustees, you have to be a resident. All the other ones, you do not.
But you could be, you could be a resident and you could be in that position.
The other, the advisory board?
No, meaning the town, town treasurer, town attorney, town clerk could be a resident and be eligible to sit on the planning commission. And then also sit in that other role.
And, and this particular statement would not deny that happening.
That's the thing that I think there is an argument that suggests that that would not be appropriate. And for example, how would a town attorney give the planning commission advice? If the attorney is also a member of the planning commission? That would be very difficult.
That's a great example.
So, so this statement is not comprehensive. So, so there could be so, so it's only talking about municipal office. That does not mean that other positions within the town would cause a conflict of interest. If you know what I mean by that.
Other employee positions.
Other employee positions.
Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. So it's, so I don't see that, that this statement would preclude excluding other, like the attorney from being on the planning commission. So it's just talking about.
I don't think you want the public works.
Yeah.
Say that?
I guess, I, this is Roger. I feel actually, I'm glad I brought it up because now the more that we discuss it, I'm actually wondering if municipal office doesn't mean you know, the attorney or the town administrator, I don't know if you would want the public works. So maybe, maybe that's, I should say employee. I don't again, back to my first question, what is municipal office? It's obvious that a board of trustee member won't be on it, other than being the ex officio that they are. But, and they cannot go to all the quasi judicial meetings. So I think, for me, I'm back to square one. What is a municipal office? I think it should have clarity in this article.
It includes town employees?
I mean, it could be, I mean, it could be certainly a I think we've heard both sides of it, that the attorney should be, could be on it and the attorney shouldn't be on it. And I would say you would want, you would not want the zoning administrator or the town administrator, you know, one way. So maybe, maybe those are what the municipal office is.
So this is, um, this, this is also in state statute. So the state statute defines the personnel of the commission, of the planning commission. And under state statute, all members of the commission shall, shall serve without compensation unless otherwise provided by ordinance and the appointed member shall hold no other municipal office. Except that one such appointed member may be a member of the zoning board of adjustment or appeals.
Are we good because it's listed in the state statute to keep that language?
Well, right. I think that I mean, I guess the planning commission in the bylaws, you could define what you think is meant by municipal office. But again, the the Netherlands Municipal Code and state statute will control. I, I do have concerns about other people who hold positions in the town government. Even staff positions serving on the planning commission. Because you want staff to be able to come to you. And to be able to present applications to you, present opinions to you. And that person really should not have a voting role.
Yeah, I still think that's a conflict of interest if, if you had town employees or staff on the planning commission. Then see, the whole idea of the planning commission is to be unbiased and and to not look like you have, you know, some allegiance to the town employees. You see what I'm saying?
It, it almost sounds to me like we need wording of the sort, shall hold no other municipal office, whether elected or appointed. Something like that. It, it strikes me that we're basically defining the purity of the planning commission. And if we want to give an exception for a board of zoning, that's fine, or, or we could just skip that and say, no, not even that.
We can, you know, we can leave it, leave it as is. We can leave it as is, not define it. Because then it's consistent with the code, with the Netherlands Municipal Code, and it's consistent with state statute.
And yet it's leading to confusion.
It does, it does.
That's why I'm wondering if we couldn't be more specific. And, and okay, I recognize the, the comment that was just made and it was a very valid comment. Perhaps a little crafting is required here, but it strikes me that the intent of this is to say no, no person in the administration with a salary, nor any member of the board of trustees can be on the planning commission. I, I think that's what we're driving at. I mean, it's, it's kind of one of those things where, when I was designing engineering systems, engineered systems, if I couldn't explain it in a sentence, I figured I didn't really understand it. And so that's kind of where I'm, that's kind of how I'm thinking about this. Can we, maybe we don't have to do it here. Maybe this can be delayed. But if we're going to do it here, I would suggest that it is better to have an explicit sentence that clearly defines what we mean for this town as opposed to a possibly confusing sentence that may be consistent with state law. Just, just a thought.
Julian, this is Jim. I wonder if that is actually, since the BOT is in charge of appointing those members, I wonder if it actually needs to be spelled out because I mean, if, if the intent is there that, I mean, I think it would be pretty unusual for an Italian paid town employee to ask to be on one of the boards. I think they'd probably be recommended that that's a conflict of interest. But I, I just wonder if, if we specify if it's needed or not, or if we're good just saying, okay, we're going to trust the BOT is not going to put somebody with a conflict of interest onto the board.
Well, I'll tell you this, nobody trusts the BOT in this town. No, it's, it's just, it's just a matter of if the wording is, is confusing anyone, then it's likely to confuse other people. And for bylaws of this sort, especially if we're going to be considering these bylaws as a possible template for other bylaws, and I think that's a good idea. The rules for other boards are going to be different than the rules for the planning commission, but I think it's best to be very explicit here. And if, if we know what we're talking about, then perhaps we should craft a sentence, maybe we can do it right here, that identifies what persons it is we're trying to describe. You know, a, a, a lot of this, a, a lot of legal jargon is ambiguous and Attorney Madsen is bound to verify that. But ideally, a legal jargon should be explicit. And I don't know, my thought would be if we can, if we know what this, if we know in our, in our heads what this means, can we turn it into a sentence? And if we can, I think that would be nice to put that sentence in here.
So, so my concern, Trustee Taylor, is that I, I don't know that we know exactly what it means. Because this is in state statutes. And so I, my preference would be not to revise the bylaws tonight in terms of defining it. But allow me to do a little research to identify if there are other groups of individuals who should be included within that term of municipal office. And then I think it would be, my suggestion would be that it would be an amendment from the top down. So from the Netherlands Municipal Code first. And then we could amend the bylaws to be consistent with the code.
So what if we were to be just explicit then in the origin of the term and simply add consistent with state statute? Just, just so we know, that's the definition we're meaning. Whatever it is.
That would be fine. We could put a citation to the state statutory source.
Yeah. And, and, and I do think it would be nice to, to do a little research and see if we can get it explicit, but yeah, that seems entirely fine to me. Yeah.
I, I think that's a good solution, actually. You happy with that, Roger?
Yes, I'm happy with any, I just brought it up because it's just as we just had this good conversation, it obviously is not very clear. And we actually have two members on the, you know, on the Board of Zoning Adjustments. We have two members, so I think we need to actually just clarify and make sure we're doing, you know, what the membership says. That's all. So yes, whichever way we go and decide, that's fine with me. Because I, I swear, 10 years ago, I had this conversation and we didn't, we didn't settle it. And then we had it, you know, five years ago when I became chair and we didn't settle it. And we're having it again and it's, it's unclear. So that's, I guess after 25 years, I'm just asking for clarity. There you go.
I, I don't disagree that it's ambiguous.
And we have, I, I would say we have two members on the Board of Zoning Adjustments. That would seem to be in conflict with that paragraph.
The Board of Trustees has done quite a bit of work to try to clarify ordinances that were unclear, kind of in this way. And so I think it's a good continuing project here in Netherlands to make sure that our ordinances, that our bylaws are absolutely explicit. And so this is a case where we say, we're going with the state's definition for now. And we're going to look into this and see if we can identify exactly what we mean and then use a clearer set of words later and amend it at some point. So I think, and I think that's entirely fine.
Okay. So Jennifer, if you add per the state statute or make that citation, I think that, that's a really good, at least temporary fix here.
Okay. So whoever is planning on giving this motion to approve the bylaws needs to add that in to the motion.
Okay. All right. Any, anyone else? Any other comments on the bylaws?
Well, I have a quick question. Roger said, we, you know, we actually have two people on the planning commission who are also on the BZA. And I just wonder like how it works where I'm a member of the BZA and Roger's an alternate. So I don't know whether, you know, that matters, you know, or, or whether it, you know, whether we're, we are compliant because there's really only one member. Or, or you know, how that definition works.
True, Billy, because I'm an alternate, but we both could end up well, you know, someone's absent and so we
Yep.
Two of us would be on that, that meeting night, we would both be on the board and we would both vote. So yes, I'm an alternate, but we're not. And again, And again, it's, it's just, I'm, understand, I'm asking for clarity.
Yeah, yeah.
So are you suggesting that um, we change the last sentence there? It says, one such appointed member, one, be a member of the Board of Zoning Adjustment. Yeah, you see that sentence, it says, except that one such appointed member may be a member of the Board of Zoning Adjustment.
Yes.
Which that limitation is in the state statute too.
No, I don't think we should change it.
Okay, so.
Saying we're out of compliance.
Well, but that can be fixed.
Well, yeah, I, I would be glad to resign tonight. Yes, absolutely. I, that's why I'm only asking for clarity in that we would be able to do this.
Yeah, I don't want to change that sentence, was the point I was getting at.
Not at all, not at all.
Okay, um, is that, um, what do you think, Billy?
That makes sense, and what Roger says is a good point. If not enough members are there, an alternate ends up voting, you know, making, really, so that an alternate is a member. And so, yeah, I mean, I, I'm happy with that situation as, as I had, I had offered to leave, you know, or, you know, to give up my seat back when I joined the planning commission. But, you know, the members of the BZA were like, no, we see a lot of value in having people in both of the, you know, commission and the board because of just the, you know, the ways those two, the content of both kind of, you know, is related. Um, and so, yeah, it's just interesting. I didn't really, um, it's interesting to hear the state bylaw that spells it out as one. Um, yeah, I guess by that definition, we are not compliant. But I, like, I'm not, um, I'm not feel, I just don't feel strongly that we would want to change it, I guess.
Okay. All right. Anything else? If not, um, did we have a motion to um, accept the revised bylaws with the following um, edits, clarification? Someone like to make that motion?
Uh, I think I can make the motion.
Okay, well, before we do this, since this is an action item, uh, I suppose we should open this up to the public? Even though we probably don't have any public except for Rick? For any comments? The public wish to speak on this at all?
You guys don't have people here to yell at you? That's weird.
No, well.
Sometimes.
Sometimes we do, but not tonight.
Don't be jealous, Trustee. This board is mellow.
Okay, if not, I will close the public comment part of this action item, bring it back to the commission for a motion.
Okay, I move that the planning commission accept the bylaws as presented with the modifications discussed in Article eight, page three, and Article three, page one.
Second.
Okay. Cynthia, would you take the vote, please?
Sure, was that, was that you, Roger, who seconded?
Yes, that was Roger.
Awesome. And Karen with the motion. Okay, we're going to go alphabetically down. So Commissioner Blakemore?
Yes.
Commissioner Cornell?
Yes.
Commissioner Giblin?
Yes.
Commissioner Glasser?
Yes.
Commissioner Herring?
Yes.
Commissioner Peray? I did not hear that. Commissioner Peray?
Yes.
Okay.
Hello?
Vice Chair Reese?
Yes.
Chair Williams?
Uh, yes.
And can Trustee Taylor vote on this?
I don't think he needs to because he's going to see, well, the Board of Trustees will see this in front of them.
And when it comes before the Board of Trustees, it's only an informational item. So I do think Trustee Taylor should vote here.
Okay.
Oh, I thought they had to uh, vote and approve these.
I don't believe so. Aren't these, aren't these, per the bottom, this, these can be amended by the planning commission?
Yeah, I think this is yours.
Oh, you have approval of the Board of Trustees if the planning commission is required? Is that, Jennifer, will that be for all the boards and commissions, uh, bylaws?
Well, it depends on what the bylaws say related to the amendment.
Okay.
Um, but typically.
We have a quorum, I don't need to vote.
Do you want to abstain?
I'll, I'll abstain.
Okay, all right, then motion passes with uh, the draft is presented with the modifications as discussed.
Okay. Thank you very much. Um, we'll move on now to the last item, which is a discussion item. Uh, best management practices for the promotion of solar votaic systems. And I think, um, I don't know if, I believe this, Cynthia, are you going to present this?
I am.
Okay.
Awesome. So as you could see from the aim in the packet, the town of Netherlands desires to achieve Seoul Smart Solar Designated Community Status. We would like to promote solar energy within the town. There are some uh, low hanging fruit that I've worked on with respect to building permitting of getting a checklist on the town website. And there's certainly other considerations with respect to building permitting process. But the discussion before the commission tonight is the consideration of how to remove barriers to solar within the zoning code. So as noted in the packet, the American Planning Association, APA, the solar briefing papers note that a lack of mention in the zoning code and the comprehensive plan constitute a significant barrier uh, against the promotion of solar. So as I laid out in the packet, there are considerations. So we will discuss the comprehensive plan update at some point here, uh, this year, next year. Um, so that's something to consider inclusion within the comp plan. But um, more, uh, you know, something that we would discuss sooner is what's in the zoning code, or rather, what is not in the zoning code. So the easiest of that would be definitions, section 16 dash six. Um, and I have included definitions that were taken from the best management practices from the Seoul Smart webinar that both Miranda and I attended. And uh, other barriers that are a little more complex for the planning commission to consider are certain aspects of predominantly 16 dash 33, which is the yard and bulk requirement. So we're talking building height, lot coverage, setbacks, things like that. There are a few other aspects um, that, that come up in the code, and I laid that out. And that's on page two of the aim. So I laid it out, uh, section 16 dash 72 accessory buildings. But that doesn't really mention, mention much in section 16 dash 78 in the supplemental. Uh, the performance standards mentions glare among other emission types. Um, the best management practice had noticed that, noted that glare is not any more significant for solar panels than it is for windows. Um, but the main considerations that the planning commission could consider and discuss are in section 16 dash 33. So heights and um, setbacks, lot coverage, those kind of things. In most cases, what I have seen come before with uh, the, doing the permitting for the town is flush mounted solar on the, are considerations. So the fire department, their access, and Rick is side by side with me reviewing the solar applications along with SafeBill. So whenever building permits come in, Rick and I put our heads together and he talks to me about any concerns of the fire code, and we ensure those are met. But uh, beyond that are those elements of 16 dash 33. So as Billy and uh, and Roger know, before the Board of Zoning Adjustment, there is a tier three variance for energy reduction that could be, that someone could apply for and come before the Board of Zoning Adjustment if, for example, they had a ground mount solar and they wanted to put it within the setbacks, or more than likely, height is a concern. Um, we don't, I haven't seen a ground mount solar. I know there's one that exists um, up off of, uh, between the Navajos that used to be a, a former mayor's house. And I haven't seen others in the town. Um, the community center, I do believe they came for a tier three variance, but that was before my time working for the town. I've been with the town for almost nine years. So I haven't seen it come up. Um, Roger, have you seen a tier three variance come up for energy reduction?
I can't say that I have. Um, but we, I don't even remember. I must have been on the board when the uh, community center was put in. I think it was almost brought in as part of the project.
That, okay.
I'm not positive of that one. There actually is another one that actually is on the ground on the uh, the Starship House out there across from the post office. They actually have solar too. But, yeah.
Okay.
Pretty small and pretty unintrusive.
Yeah, so it's not used. I mean, it's great that it's, it's a plausible reality that someone could come before the Board of Zoning Adjustment to have a tier three variance if they wanted to have some sort of energy reduction, but it, it doesn't really seem to be used. Um, and I, you know, and I do think that there are some houses in town that probably exceed the building height. And I think that is where, when we start to dial into these considerations, height is a big one in this town. And when you think about uh, the Little Bear and how, you know, there was a lot of concern about the height when they were wanting to build those two duplexes, which are still in construction. And the board had set them at 24 feet, um, when the board approved that application. So, you know, if they had added solar to that, would the neighbors be up in arms? But I do think that, that these are meat for discussion among the planning commission to consider height and, and, and sizes and things like that. Like uh, if a solar panel, if a house was below 35 feet, but maybe the solar panels poked above a little bit, uh, you know, that may not be a huge consideration versus the house as it exists is 35 feet. And then they want to go above that, and how would neighbors feel about that? Would exceeding the height then cast shadow on somebody else's house that would lose whatever solar gain may exist? So I just want the commission to consider this as we are trying to remove barriers that could be considered. And, and of course, whatever is decided and whatever the planning commission recommends, then that would go before the Board of Trustees to consider those aspects. But what are the considerations that commissioners are thinking about with respect to how to promote solar and remove barriers?
Okay, um, is, is that your, is that the end of your presentation, Cynthia?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, there's a lot of resources within the aim that I included. Uh, so certainly there are things that you guys could check out. I provided some links and, um, you know, feel like that out. Or uh, you could look at the recorded webinar that both Miranda and I did that lays out all these best management practices. They pretty much plugged through. I took the information in the aim from that best management practice webinar.
Okay. Um, okay, let's um, let's kind of open it up to the, to the planning commission members for any comments, or what's your kind of view of um, of the uh, issue in front of us?
I have a few comments. Um, as this board probably knows, the Board of Trustees has made a number of inroads in order to improve uh, our environmental support, uh, including requiring that any new houses must be electric vehicle capable. And that if anybody puts in another set of apartments, for every four parking places, there needs to be one general purpose EV charger. So we're, we've been very focused on that, and this is a very welcome review by the planning commission. Uh, I have only two concerns. One of them is the height requirement. I think we could address that height require, the, the issue of putting solar cells on the roof, that is to say, item number one, uh, by specifying a slope. Uh, so it's very unlikely that a roof with a slope of 40 degrees is going to install solar cells that go up above the peak of the roof. It's just not how solar cells are typically installed. But if it were a flat roof or a roof with a slope of, I'm going to just throw out 20 degrees, then it's quite possible that that roof might be near the limit, and a solar cell may go above that limit. And so I think if we're going to specify, when we specify this in detail in Netherlands municipal code, I think item number one should take into account the slope of the roof. And for steeply sloped, sloped roofs, I don't think we give them any um, variance. But for merely flat roofs or flat roofs, those are cases where there's almost no way to avoid going above the height of the roof. And for those, we may give a blanket variance. Uh, the other thing that's concerning me a little bit is the setbacks. Now, we certainly don't want to go through the same thing we did with, for example, Salto, where we let people put in solar cells that really honestly make it very hard to determine uh, if, if, if there's a car coming. So I think we will want to make clear that we are relaxing setbacks, but we're not eliminating them. So those are my only two concerns.
Yeah, those are excellent points. Um, I had thought of the second one about not eliminating setbacks, but relaxing them. So that's very good. Any other comments?
I would, I wouldn't, this is Billy, I wouldn't really necessarily relax the height, height limit either, but potentially have a variance. Um, you know, so where, where they'd really have to go to the, go through the process to get it approved, you know, per the state, per the, you know, project. Because I think if you, if, if you loosen that, you know, if, if you, whatever, um, if you soften that, that height limit, it, you know, it's just going to go up from there.
Perhaps establish a maximum for the amount you can exceed that level.
Yeah, I actually think.
Anything beyond that, anything beyond that, they require a variant, something like that.
Yeah, and I think you're, yeah, I don't really think I agree with you um, about the whole pitch thing. I mean, yeah, generally, a steeper pitch, you know? If, if it's flush, you know, it's going to just sit tighter and not, you know, and not jut up as much, and, and something with a stellar pitch will butt up some. But I don't necessarily, I don't, we shouldn't treat them differently, in my opinion, based on pitch at all, just height.
Uh, this is Karen, and I have a few comments. Um, and I will also comment on the height. Um, so I don't think we want to require um, a variance for every um, uh, solar panel that height that would exceed the maximum building height. Because we do want, what we're trying to do here is to make it easier for people to um, uh, use solar. So that's my comment there. And Cynthia, on number three? And Cynthia, on number three and number four, you have not applicable. Are you saying that we don't want to allow solar panels on ADUs for number three?
I didn't see anything in the code that really, you know, prevented it or that seemed obstructive. So I might have, you know, overlooked something, but I didn't see anything that really, you know, necessarily seemed like it was, you know, particularly an issue. And really, what they were considering with is that solar itself would count toward an accessory uses maximum. And my logic there is we don't necessarily, you know, limit it in that same way. We limit by lot coverage. So we say, okay, you can cover this much of the lot rather than saying, you know, you can have this many buildings or you can't have this many buildings. So it's a little, a little awkward. But I, you know, I don't know, we can certainly talk about that more, but I don't know that that's really particularly applicable. The aesthetic requirements, the screening, there really wasn't, I think that's seen in more codes down in the city. And, you know, in different cities where there's a lot of aesthetic requirements, so there's screening. And there was for a long time considerations where it's like, no, we don't want to see that from the road. You know, we don't, we don't like that. And with solar, in order to promote it, it's really like, we want people to see solar. We want them to see it. It's important for people to see that we support solar. So I don't know that that's very applicable to Ned's code. There's considerations of screening for junkyards in Ned's code, but seeing as there's not mention of solar in the code in this way, it's not specifically called out to say, okay, we don't want to see, you know, PV installations from the roadway.
Okay, that clarifies three and four. So has the, Cynthia, have you encountered any barriers during the permitting process for solar applications?
You know, really what I see, and this kind of goes, you know, beyond you guys, is really in the building end of things. That's really where I think there are other things to work out. And I've been, you know, on SafeBuild. Can we speed these things up just a little bit? You know, are there ways? You know, in order to get like a gold designation, they want to see a one day turnaround. That's not gonna happen. And there, you know, there's another consideration that people would enter in information and without having to go through the building code. I don't know that that's applicable for Nederland. We have a lot of old buildings. And I think it's important to consider the structural soundness of the roof. So that, you know, there's no liability there where your huge system doesn't come crashing through an old roof. So I do think that there needs to be some time. I've been working with SafeBuild on this and they're willing to put a faster spin onto the solar permits. Not as fast as I'm sure, you know, SolarSmart would like, you know, like in three days. But they're willing to put a spin. And although if an applicant doesn't have all their materials, if there are revisions needed to the plans because certain things don't work, if, for example, Fire Marshal Rick Hendrickson weighs in and says, hey, you know, you don't have the requisite space around the roof for emergency personnel to be able to access the roof for what we need, then that's gonna slow those permits down. And it's not, you know, the job of the town to hustle it out right away when it doesn't meet code, whether it's the fire code or building code. But really, that's more of what I see. Really with the comprehensive plan and the zoning code, there's just an absence of considering solar. So that's the barrier that is seen in the best management practices is by not including it, it's a barrier. So by including it, adding definitions and trying to consider what areas of the zoning code are prohibitive of solar and how can we smooth that out a bit? You know, which is what I've laid out in the aim. What considerations could help promote solar rather than hinder it? And Ned have as many hindrances to things in their code as I think other codes down in the city do with their very specific on aesthetic things and glare and and other aspects. Really with Ned, it's, there's no definitions for it. And there are specific considerations. And I think Trustee Taylor brings up a good point of not impinging on the vision clearance. Vision clearance is an aspect that's included within the Nederland Zone Code, and that is something that I always consider with signs. There are some signs in the town, and you all have experienced them, when you're driving around, where you pull up and you cannot see around the darn sign because they have this old sign that's been there forever. And it makes it challenging to try to see oncoming traffic. So certainly with, you know, new signage and other things, I'm always considering that. Is there a vision clearance issue here? So I think that he makes a great point about setbacks. Mount, is that something that you're not going to be able to see around and cause traffic issues? And that would be something at the staff level that I would point out to applicants and say, okay, this is on a corner and this is an issue. You're gonna have to back this up. But beyond that, you know, what other considerations do Commissioners see? And I think a lot of it is height. We're very concerned about blocking out the height. When you start to get into smaller districts, say like Old Town, I mean, you know, in Big Springs and other places in mountain residential zoning, you have these generally acre sized lots. Somebody's solar panels next door in the lot next door may not hinder you in any way. But when you're talking a smaller district like the CBD downtown or Old Town, that may be hindered by, by somebody's solar panels. They could put solar panels up on their house and that may hinder your solar gain on your, at your house. And I think those are considerations. You see that a lot more in the city where, you know, people are not to shade out other people's solar and whatnot. But I think that it merits some attention and consideration.
I think that's a whole nother subject. I know that the city of Boulder has building regulations concerning persons' access to solar, not being blocked by a big building right next to them. So, okay, so just a few more comments. So I think SAB should review.
Yeah, and we're certainly taking it to other boards. I discussed this at the Board of Zoning Adjustment. It wasn't in their packet. I just brought up another business and said, hey, this is a consideration that we're looking at because someone could come before the Board of Zoning Adjustment for a tier three variance. And Roger Cornell sits on that board as an alternate. Also, as mentioned earlier, Commissioner Giblin also sits on the Board of Zoning Adjustment. So the suggestion there at the Board of Zoning Adjustment was put this in a packet and bring it to our next meeting so we can discuss that further. Because I just mentioned it on the fly of, in other business, this is something that's gonna be coming up and I want the Board of Zoning Adjustment to consider it from the variance aspects. But, you know, it wasn't in the packet or anything like that. So this is really its first, the first stop in what may be a long discussion on solar. And we'd like to bring it to other boards. And it was supposed to come to the Sustainability Advisory Board tomorrow, but I believe their agenda is so packed that we'll be discussing it in February.
Okay.
Does that help?
On page thirty of the packet, under examples, the first section, more permissive option. The last sentence, it says, "Solar energy systems may generate energy in excess of the energy requirements of a property if it is sold back to a public utility in accordance with the law." One of our climate goal objectives from In Vision 2030 for environmental sustainability is to support energy storage to increase the resiliency to the impacts of climate change and improve smart grid flexibility and stability. So I would suggest that we remove the if it is sold back to a public utility in accordance with the law.
I agree with that.
Thank you, Billy.
Thank you for that.
What else? You're welcome. Page thirty-five of the packet, under creating incentives. The first paragraph, Tucson, second sentence, Tucson, Arizona has passed resolutions waiving permit fees. Is that something we want to consider as a way to incentivize solar installations?
It's not really in the purview of the Planning Commission. I mean, it's, you know, certainly I appreciate your comments and I think that that may come up under the Sustainability Advisory Board, but just to keep to what is the purview of the Planning Commission? Chapter sixteen, I mean, obviously seventeen, fifteen, sixteen and seventeen. But just not to get too far afield on what is specifically under your guys' purview.
Okay, and page forty of the packet, there's discussion about solar access ordinances, designing and developing new subdivisions and structures to maximize their opportunities for using solar resource. So, yeah, I think that's probably a good thing to consider. I think it's a bigger discussion than the solar installations.
Okay.
And they have.
Just backing up a little bit, Karen, and so the Commission understands. So with respect to, you know, waiving permit fees, the town makes twenty percent of the permit costs. Not any of the hard costs, so not utility fees, so anything water and sewer, that's all the town's money. And certain other aspects. But with respect to permitting fees and plan review fees, the town makes twenty percent of those, of that amount, and SafeBuild gets eighty percent for reviews. So just as a consideration, when you talk about waiving permit fees, the majority is going to SafeBuild for their work. Ours is pretty minimal. Just so aware of that, you know, I'm neither for nor against. I'm, you know, I do permitting, I'm a neutral party here. But I just want to point that out.
When I had solar panels installed on my house, it was done through Namaste Solar. And from my point of view, it was pretty easy. They took care of everything. All the permitting. But there was an issue with wind. And there was a question about whether my roof could support solar panels with the heavy wind. What they ended up doing was they put twice as many connectors from the panels onto the roof in order to accommodate the wind load. So I guess that's one thing to consider up here. Is it may be, you know, an obstacle that there's ways to engineer around.
Thank you, Karen. That was, this is Linda. That was a question I had about if there was any language in safety because of the high winds up here on installations.
Great point.
Any other comments?
I have a quick question for the whole board and perhaps Karen can answer this. I'm wondering if there is any value in favoring ground versus rooftop installations? And I ask that question considering that if one's rooftop is shingled, those shingles have a specific lifespan and at some point the shingles have to be replaced. And when that happens, do all the solar cells have to come down? And then the roof be reshingled and then all the solar cells be put back?
Yes, but the thing is, they also protect the solar shing, not the solar shingles, the asphalt shingles or whatever are protected and actually it generally can has the, has the, you know, potential to extend the life of a roof. You know, depending on how much is covering. But, yeah, they would come down, but it's kind of put up, you know, each solar panel. They put a bracket system in its solar panels. It's somewhat modular, so they just take it down that way.
So, yeah.
I mean, it looks, it looks like the part of the roof that's not covered with solar panels is gonna wear first and you're gonna have to replace that. And, yeah, I guess, I guess you could just do that and take it right up to the shingles that are protected. But, yeah, I'm just wondering if there isn't some value in favoring ground installations? But perhaps not. Perhaps that's just a very straightforward.
When you live in Old Town with a tenth acre, there's nowhere to put them.
Yeah, I can imagine that.
Yeah, it just eats up, it just eats up square footage of the property fast.
I did consider a ground installation. Because I do have a flat area close to the house. It would be more expensive to do a ground installation than a roof mounted. I think shingles last thirty years. Solar panels, I believe, have a shorter lifespan. And Billy might know exactly how long solar.
Yeah, that's pretty true. By the time you were doing new pan, you would probably be upgrading your solar anyway.
Okay, good, good information. Thank you. I was just curious.
But it does protect it. I have one question on the, on the wind, because I wondered about this one. I don't totally understand the fire department's talking about the three foot clearance. What does that mean? I guess before I say, what do they mean by the three foot clearance?
Rick?
Yeah. Yeah, there's a couple of things on roof lines or on the roof requirements by code. One is that there be a three foot pathway from the low eve to the bridge line and that also along the bridge, there'd be three feet of clearance on the other side. And that allows us to get
Perfect.
roof and do ventilation practice if we need to open up the roof to get spoken heat out of a house. We have, like Cynthia said earlier, we've been working together on that. We've reduced the, the top space from three feet down to one feet as long as the panels are only on one side of the roof. And that gives, we think that gives us enough access and enough working space there. We still do need one side with the three feet, but and so far we've worked with all the companies.
Okay, okay, that makes sense. So it's three feet of basically, you know, from the edge of the edge of the roof, whether it's the eve or, you know, whichever angle it's on. That makes sense, yeah. And that, you know, that would also help with the height. If you're three feet off the ridge line, you're likely not higher than the ridge line anyways with your panels, so it kind of takes care of it. And the pitch. Thanks, Rick.
So we can bring this back for more discussion and and again, we'd like to take this before other boards for their considerations. But explicitly with the Planning Commission, your purview is affected by any considerations, you know, by adding definitions, by altering, you know, amending any language with respect to sixteen thirty-three or any other code sections. So you're important in these considerations.
So Cynthia, what is your?
So Cynthia, what what is your sort of your timeline? You you mentioned bringing it to other boards and and perhaps we might consider some zoning modifications or the code modifications for the items we discussed. Um, but what's your timeline, what are you looking at?
Um, I'm going to bring Miranda in with her lovely horse voice. Uh, I know that we wanted to have initial discussions before we start suggesting code changes. I threw some things in the aim from the best management practices about definitions and other things, but before we had Jennifer alter the code and bring that before you as an action item, we wanted to stir the juices and get you thinking about this and any other considerations. And I know Roger, when he was chair, he would wake up at three in the morning thinking about zoning things. And so you may leave this meeting and consider other aspects uh as you look through chapter sixteen of, oh, I hadn't thought about that at the meeting, so certainly any comments. Um, you know, it'd be great if we could do that this year or um, you know, by mid-year, we've got some time, but um getting before all the other boards, so what do you think, Miranda?
Yeah, so I think originally when this all came forward, the plan was to try to seek a bronze designation under uh this campaign and then in order to kind of upgrade that, as Cynthia noted, we would be looking at code changes. And in order to receive that bronze designation, kind of one big step was doing this planning commission review. Cynthia is definitely uh taking this further and which is great because it kind of stopped with sustainability coordinator. So Cynthia has grabbed this ball and ran with it and by bringing it before the other uh boards and commissions, I think we can get enough feedback that probably in April, we could start looking at some code amendments um to bring before the new board.
Okay, yeah, I guess my suggestion to the commission would be for people not to wake up early in the morning like Roger and come up with an idea, but look over the the uh chapter sixteen and and you know, remind Cynthia with any further comments um as as you think of them. Um, and we'll just kind of go from there, does that sound reasonable?
Sounds great, yeah, that sounds wonderful.
Okay, anyone else have any last minute uh thoughts or comments? Okay.
Okay.
Well, if not, um, again, encourage everyone to um read over the material again, maybe check out some of the links and um any other ideas, submit those to Cynthia and Miranda.
I, yeah, I have one other thing, but it's not on this subject, I just wanted to.
Oh, you mean on other business?
Yeah, I guess we're not.
Okay, is it ready to move to other business, so that's a good segue.
Um, I don't, we don't have to dive too deep into it or or we can, but we don't have to, um, but you know, I am learned that here in Netherlands, um, and I know when we were talking through code, I think I presented it kind of inaccurately because I was talking about frost depth and they were talking more about water lines and sewer lines, but but foundation depths, I think in this, in in the town. Correct me if I'm wrong, but someone told me that they're forty-eight inches, you know, to dig a foundation. And that just seems really high, I did a little bit of research and, you know, I I looked at Esses Park, Idaho Springs, Boulder County, Grand County, um, the the only place I found that had a forty-eight inch was Leadville. Um, so I I don't really know why we're sticking to this forty-eight inch um foundation depth, it just seems like a lot of extra digging. It doesn't seem consistent with just all the places around us. And some I just want to dig into, I don't know when, you know, potential code amendments or, you know, things the code are are visited, if that's just annually or every few years, but that's just a thing, I feel like it's maybe a little out of whack.
We talked about it with the building code, the forty-eight inch uh frost depth, that is part of the Netherlands design criteria. So it is aspect of building and, you know, building construction that builders would have to consider. And that that is the case um at present.
Right.
There is discussion that um there may be a few little bits and pieces with respect to uh wind speed and other things that may be altered um just to make sure that we didn't miss anything that uh would be coming up this year. Miranda, did you want to mention anything further about that?
No, I know that that was a big thing for Chris Palteer, who's obviously not here. I'm happy to bring Emmett in if there's once like kind of further discussion on that. I think it'd be best for Public Works to weigh in there.
Yeah, I know when we talked about it, you know, and Chris did weigh in, you know, with the water or or with the the code changes for, you know, that started earlier this month. It it really was the frost line, it was really like water and and that was kind of the um the the thing, and and that's kind of one thing, but I think the foundation depth, it just, I mean, when when I brought it up, Dan, I think the guy from Safe Belt, he's like, well, that's not true, most places use, he said offhand, he's like, well, maybe some places use thirty-six inches, well, I researched it, I haven't found any place that uses thirty-six inches, it's mostly thirty inches. And then, you know, Leadville, that forty-eight, so it it's, it does, I just, you know, when I I, you know, I I wonder if wind is enough to drive, drive the foundation eighteen inches deeper.
Okay, the um, anything else for other business, does the town, town staff have anything to report on that we didn't discuss tonight?
I just have one thing, um, obviously, it's election time, so the nomination petitions have all, they were all due um five o'clock on Monday, so we received one for mayor, uh Julian Taylor here, running unopposed unless someone does an affidavit for write-in. And then for trustee, there are five candidates, uh Karen Blankmore, Tom Mowold, David Sights, Tanya Corvillan and Riley McAllister. Um, we have currently verified the nomination petitions for everyone but Riley. And we are waiting for like Riley to provide proof of residency that he will have been a twelve-month consecutive resident um as of the election date, so we are waiting for that. He has until Monday to provide that documentation. Um, so uh just as a reminder, there are three trustee seats available for election. When, if if and when Julian Taylor moves into that mayor role, that will create a vacancy and one of the first things a new board will do is then appoint someone to fill that vacancy.
Can I appoint Steve?
At the election time.
Okay.
I'm sorry, we're having internet problems here, Julian.
I'm gonna turn off my video because I think I may be messing, uh, I may have a bandwidth issue.
No, 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 we're, we're.
Okay, I I actually have something to add to that, so go ahead and finish, Miranda.
That was it. Please vote when the ballots go out.
Yep.
I I have a quick question about the, yeah, Riley's petition, did he get the the ninth and tenth signature?
He did, yeah, he did provide the two signatures that we verified. So the only thing is where you're waiting is the proof of residency.
Okay, so I would just like to let everyone know, and Miranda, please take this as your official notification. Uh, we are going to do a constitution reading at Very Nice Brewing Company, February ninth at six o'clock. We uh, we've done several of these, we call it Voice the Constitution, it's very fun. We read everything, including all the amendments and all the signatories, and it takes only one hour. And we follow that with a discussion about the constitution itself, it's not political. We've had conservatives and regressives and progressives all there and we don't get into any of that. We just talked about the constitution and it's very fun. And so uh I invite all of you, and I I would invite all of you to notify everyone, Miranda is going to send out a notice, so it doesn't matter if there are a whole bunch of government uh folks there uh because it's going to be an official, officially announced meeting. So Very Nice Brewing Company, six o'clock on February ninth, that's a Wednesday. So it's it's uh reading the constitution all the way through and drinking beer.
So just, are you, are you buying, Julian?
No, I'm not buying.
Oh, come on.
But I am giving, I am giving an interesting speech at the beginning.
Much forward to it.
Vote for beers, vote for beers.
Hey, that's great, thank you.
Lager there?
Yes, they have a new, very nice lager.
They do?
They got everything and they have.
That's a new addition.
They have the very best.
No P V R, Roger.
Yeah.
I just want a lager, they, for years they didn't have lager.
That's, it's new, it's quite new.
I have a question.
You have a question?
From staff, from Cynthia?
Yes.
We've already seen this from the road, but uh Little Bear, the now we had certainly had a discussion on the parking when we were, went through all the drainage and parking was a big part. Um, from what I see from the highway, it's, are they doing anything to meet the parking requirements? Because it certainly looks tight, tight, tight.
I will have to look into that. Um, they did have onsite parking planned and yeah, I will take a look at it.
It's in the plan, if they're not conforming, then absolutely we need to address that.
It wants to look tight on the plan, actually.
Well, it's tight on the plan, but now, I mean, it looked like there was, you know, you could park a vehicle facing east and west and still have, you know, eight feet behind that park, you know, to drive by it. And I mean, there's, what I see, there's no way, the only way that they can get between uh the the brewing company and into garage would be, you know, there can't be another vehicle there. So it looks like there's only parking for in garages. And also, I have no idea, but what is the uh status of that, like the the little cabin that's still there, what's going to happen to that?
That's a good question. I don't remember them saying they were going to keep that.
Initially, we're going to disassemble it and use, use parts of the siding to clad the new building, but I think the fire department shot that down because it's all wood. But yeah, they're still, it's still standing.
Yeah, I thought when they were demolished and I.
I think it's going away.
Yeah, I, well, I thought they were demolishing, all of a sudden, they thought that, oh my goodness, it's it. So I I was assuming it was a historical cabin and they can't take it away, was what I was kind of came up with my thoughts of, you know, why is it still there? Um, but yeah, that was actually part of the places where they would be able to park or turn around or access that last building.
Yeah.
So.
Well, I will reach out to them, Roger, thanks for pointing that out, I'll reach out to them and see. Um, you know, there have been some issues with respect to drainage concerns mentioned by knotted root. So we've been in communication with them the entire time, I'm sure they're probably sick of us because, you know, we reach out uh when any complaints come before us and mention that to them. But I will ask about the cabin and the status of when that's coming down and also note that there looks to be concerns regarding the parking and and bring in the site plan and see how compliant they can be with the site plan. They can't just make arbitrary changes while they're constructing, even though we know little field changes happen in construction, but it was a very uh specific P U D plan that was approved so they could double that density, so thanks for bringing that up. Roger.
Okay.
I just wondered if somebody would let me know who is uh rolling off the B O T, obviously the mayor's one, but who are the other trustees?
Uh, trustee Apth is not running again, trustee Corvillan is coming off, but she will be running and the trustee Danforth.
And uh trustee Danforth i- is running again or not?
No, only trustee Corvillan is running again.
Okay.
It is interesting how few people are willing to run again.
Taste of it.
We're going to try to fix that, but we will see.
Some people are gluttons for punishment at hem.
Yeah, I thought, I thought this was just an experiment, Julian, that you could learn more about politics, you're really taking it to the next level.
Don't remember, I have a four-year term, so I'm going to be there two more years anyway. And it was that, that played a role in my deciding to put myself in as basically somebody to fill in if there were no other good candidates, I had no idea there would be no candidates, so, yeah.
You blew away the competition.
Right.
Jonathan?
Consider that a vote of confidence.
We will see if we can, we will see if we can get more people running in two years, and that's one of my goals.
Who are the ones that are not up for election, uh Jonathan Baumhofer?
Uh, yeah, Mayor Protem Baumhofer and uh trustee Kumbhizmaal. And then trustee Taylor, but that's a unique situation.
Okay, um, final question, um Cynthia and Miranda, do we see anything on the horizon coming up for the planning commission? As far as.
Vacation, runaway vacation for South Johnson Street, while that doesn't come before the planning commission, the request is coming back before the board of trustees with a kind of a modified request, different people applying, and if you recall, last time, the planning commission asked that it be brought to the, excuse me, the board of trustees asked that it be brought to the planning commission, that could happen again, um, looking free to weigh in on the modified plan.
Okay.
Cynthia, I don't know of anything else, do you?
I do not know of anything else. Um, you know, we have people from time to time uh, you know, looking at a more residential basis of things that come up and say they're gonna uh, you know, apply for a variance or they'll, you know, come to the planning commission, but as to whether or not they actually submit is another story. So, nothing that I can think of presently.
Okay, so the reason I ask is that um I think it's time to revisit some of these other municipal code changes that was on the list that was put together last year. Um, and if we have time to start to dig into some of these, maybe we can build those into another meeting, but we'll talk about that later. I just want to raise that to everyone's attention.
So um, Steve, my suggestion on that is to go through all the chapters and sects, sections in the municipal code that we have not revised recently um to see if there's other changes that we should be making. Um, so I I, I I think we need to look at the whole, at all of the code um and not just apply these specific changes, so um that would be my recommendation.
If you get, Karen, you can do that, that'll be the purview of the B O T is the other chapters. Um, but certainly before the planning commission fifteen, sixteen, seventeen.
Oh, well, well, for fifteen, sixteen and seventeen, I think we should take, you know, look at all, everything in fifteen, sixteen and seventeen, not just the specific, the the changes that um.
Right.
Uh, who who was it that came up, up with the the changes?
For seventeen, for subdivisions?
Well, seventeen.
Subdivisions are, are, we, we finished, we totally.
We did that.
Yeah, but um, yeah, someone looked at the code and earlier.
Dallas Masters.
Dallas.
When he was on the board.
So I'm not saying that his recommendations are are faulty in any way, but I think we need to take another look at um the chapters that we're responsible for in their entirety, you know, read them from top to bottom and see if there's any changes.
That's sort of what's on this list, is a whole bunch of changes where people have submitted some, I know Karen, you you put some of these in here as well.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I think we ought to sort of revisit that, I I, you know, fully agree. Uh, seventeen, I thought the way that uh worked out was very well. And I think maybe we should start looking at, most of these look like they're from. And I think maybe we should start looking, most of these look like they're from chapter sixteen.
Well, I, I guess, so the, the changes that I noted in that list were things that I came across just when I was looking at the code. And I sent an email to Karen Garrity, to Miranda, and said, this doesn't look right, we should change this. So what I'm saying is, it's good to make those changes, but if we're going to be changing fifteen and sixteen, I guess seventeen is the subdivision code, then I think we need, we should do a comprehensive review of fifteen and sixteen, and not just look at those specific changes that I suggested and Dallas suggested and whoever else suggested changes.
Good point.
Okay. All right, if there is nothing else, we shall adjourn, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. We could count on you, Chris. Second?
A second.
Was that Billy?
Yes.
Wonderful. Anyone against, anyone abstaining? Getting adjourned at nine twelve PM, thanks, everyone.